Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me try it again. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is the first day back from my recess. For the record, I am Chairman Barnes, and let me say that I am excited. I am excited to be back in the saddle and ready to get back to work. But before we get this party started, if you will, there's a couple announcements that I'd like to make and things I'd like to share. I want to first start by stating that we have a couple of resignations from the commission. Resignations of Vice Chair Bailey and Commissioner Washington. It is a sad day for me simply because of the value that they brought to this commission over the years. As we are approaching a new season and our organization is evolving, it is with deep admiration that the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Board announces the resignation of two of our dedicated commissioners. After 14 years of service, Vice Chair Bailey resigns effectively August 30th of 2025. And my good friend to my left, Ms. Washington, is resigning effective October the 1st with great sadness. Vice Chair Bailey and Commissioner Washington have been tremendous assets to the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning and our work in Prince George's County for over the past 14 years. During their terms, Vice Chair Bailey and Commissioner Washington contributed significantly to the weekly, I'm sorry, contributed significantly to the weekly review of development applications. They were instrumental in the adoption of several master and sector plans as well as Prince George's County 2035. They approved general plan for Prince George's County and participated in many planning parks, recreational activities. We are grateful for their steadfast leadership that Vice Chair Bailey and Commissioner Washington provided to MNC PPC. Please join me in sending them well wishes and congratulations on their retirement, resignation, their next chapter of life because you all will be sorely missed. You brought a great deal to this commission, and in my short period of time here, I have found a true admiration of both of you for your contribution, to your education. To me, the support that I received from you all, I will be missed, I mean, you all will be missed. I think I even shared with anyone that will listen to me that my thoughts of who you all were coming in quickly changed simply because of what I saw you all on the front lines and how you carried yourself and the professionalism that you all carry, I admire. So on this day, once again, if you all can put your hands together in wishing them well.
I'll have more to say later. Thank you all.
Good morning, once again. This is the time I call the September 4th Planning Meeting to order. We have the following board members with us today: Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Geraldo, and I am, once again, Chairman Barnes. We now move forward to the business at hand. Please note that the deadline for all participation pre-registration and for submission of all materials and exhibits was due at 12 noon on Tuesday before the Planning Board meeting. And for the record, going forward, starting in October, all materials and exhibits will be due by 12 noon, that there will not be any more walk-ups or registration on-site. That will help us with efficiency and expediency. So once again, starting in October, that we will no longer accept any materials or exhibits as a walk-up. More details to follow on what those procedures look like, but I will continue to make that announcement. Now we will move on with the today's agenda. Order of cases, 2 and 3 have been removed, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11, we will hear...
Mr. Chairman, is an update?
Item 2 has not been... Item 2...
We're still going to hear item 2? Okay. Item 12 and 13 have been removed. The next item on the agenda, we would now hear item 2, draft minutes of July 31st, 2025. We look for motion approval of the minutes of July 31st. Is there a motion?
Move or move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, I will now call the roll. Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
I vote aye.
And I vote aye as well. We will now move forward with the consent calendar. Consent calendar items 4A, 4B, 4C, 4E, 4F, and 4G. Is there anyone who wishes to oppose the staff's recommendation on the considered agenda?
Excuse me, Chairman? You have another question?
These should be items 4A...
4B?
4G.
That's what I said.
Yep.
You skipped 4D.
It's just 4A through 4G.
Just approve the count.
There you go. Is there anyone that wishes to oppose the staff recommendation on a considered agenda item? If not, is there a motion for approval?
After consideration of the record for items numbers 4A through 4G, I move adoption of the staff findings and approval of the items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff.
Second.
Been properly moved and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to the regular agenda items. The first item on the agenda is item 5, Office of the Planning Director Legislative Draft We'll now hear from Saquon Smith.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. of the Planning Board, for the record. Director, I am Saquon Smith with the Planning Director's Office. Today I'll be presenting item number 5 on the agenda Legislative Draft Request LDR-89-5, providing standard review procedures for pre-application consultation and notice. Next slide. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to require certain development applicants to conduct a pre-application consultation and provide pre-application notices to interested county council members to ensure that county council members remain aware of the development activity in their respective constatitions. Next slide.
As a means to increase the council's awareness of development activities and to formalize an engagement process with elected officials, so many seen between applicants and staff of residents affected by a proposed development, LDR-89 proposes an additional required engagement step in the pre-application period for applicants to meet with county council members whose district will be impacted by the proposed development, and a requirement for applicants conducting pre-application neighborhood meetings to notify the relevant county council members of the upcoming meeting. Next slide. The proposed amendment would impact all properties in Prince George's County, requesting approval for any development application identified in Section 27, 3401B1, including zoning map amendments, planned development zoning map amendments, Chesapeake Bay critical area overlay zoning map amendments, special exemptions, detailed site plans, major departures, and development pursuant to the prior zoning ordinance. Next slide. The proposed legislation was reviewed and assessed by our planning staff and feedback included. Requiring development consultations with elected officials, especially county council members, is a rare and most peer in U.S. jurisdictions. As seen in the next slide, many of which do not mandate such meetings in their land use planning regulations, and requiring applicants to consult officials before applying might be seen as a political gatekeeping and raise due process issues. Next slide. As you see here in the chart, in Arondo, members of the deciding body must refrain from communicating with interested parties outside of a public meeting about an application. In Fairfax County, offers staff-led pre-application consultations at the applicant's discretion to advise on necessary issues and recommend additional meetings. And in Rockville, any email or written communication to the decision-making body is forwarded to city staff who respond to inquiries and provide regulatory information. Next slide. The finding of consistency assumes that the proposed pre-application meeting will occur as part of a developer's due diligence and stakeholders' engagement, whether or not the law requires it, and that such a requirement formalizes standard development practice. Plan 2035 and related development plans suggest streamlining development review and permitting. Adding steps to approval contradicts these recommendations as the proposed legislation's meeting is a standard practice of pre-application due diligence. Introducing a mandatory undefined consultation step could hinder the county's development goals due to the unclear standards. This may cause unequal treatment of applicants, delays, and transparency issues due to variations in council members' vetability expectations, which could lead to inconsistent pre-application processes across districts. Next slide. From this analysis, if the Planning Board decides to proceed, the Planning Department recommends the following key proposed amendments. First, revise to add a 14-business-day timeframe for conducting a pre-application consultation following a written request submitted by the applicant to reduce the risk of prolonged delays and enhance procedural predictability. Following practices of peer jurisdictions, revise to allow pre-application consultation at the applicant's discretion to provide advisory services or enable developers to engage county council members as stakeholders. Bathing this would seem like political gatekeeping and threaten applicants' due process rights. And lastly, create a clear window for pre-application consultations. Section 27-3402(c)(2) of the zoning ordinance requires applicants to give a 30-day notice before the pre-application neighborhood meeting. Consultations if requested should occur after the conference and within the notice period to avoid delays. This aligns with Plan 2035's goals for downtown and Innovation Corridor. Additionally, for developments in these areas, the planning director may waive the consultation if the proposal aligns with an approved plan. In closing, the department takes no position on LDR-89-2025, but transmit the comments here into the county council. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Seeing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing that there were no one to speak against this, before we vote on, from the Planning Board, I realize that there are three legislative amendments before us today. The three draft bills are related to the pre-application conference and the zoning code. In regard to LDR-98-2025, I understand the importance of the council members being aware of proposed development projects and their districts, but I do not agree a meeting between council members and developers should be mandatory. Within the staff report, planning staff raised very good points about the appearance of such meetings and potential violations of due process. In addition to my experience, most developers in this county proactively seek out their government officials in early stages of the development process, and I have such made clear previously, I strongly encourage such outreach. But imposing additional mandatory steps in their pre-application process where surrounding jurisdictions has an optional process would be inconsistent with the council's stated goals of improving the efficiency and development review process. Although I am in opposition of this draft bill, I am supporting the work of the county council to ensure that we all reach a great solution to ensure that the process is comparable to other pre-application processes in the region. Commissioners, there's a motion on this item?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If we're concerned and consistent with what you're saying, why are we taking a no position as opposed to a position to say, if we're going to take the no position, we only take it if our amendments or comments are included?
Well, what I am proposing is that I am in opposition of their no position.
Okay, then I am as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, strongly associating myself with your comments, I would like to move that we adopt the findings of staff report and take a position of no on LDR-89-2025 and ensure that we transfer our comments, including your remarks, to the council.
I would second that, that we are opposing the bill.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to the next item on the agenda, item 6, Office of Planning Legislative Draft Request LDR-111-2025. Mr. Smith?
Again, for the record, I am Saquon Smith with the Planning Director's Office. Item number 6 on the agenda is Legislative Drafting Request LDR-111, 2025. Next slide. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to require applicants to include community feedback provided during the pre-application neighborhood meeting into that meeting's written summary. Amend certain development application procedures to require applicants who conduct their preapplication neighborhood meetings to submit the written summary in the applicable application. Add the neighborhood meeting written summary to the administrative record of certain development applications, providing that certain participants in pre-application neighborhood meetings shall be deemed persons of record and revise a certain definition in accordance with these amendments. In summary...
Next slide.
In summary, this seeks to require applicants to include community feedback provided during the pre-application neighborhood meeting into that meeting's written summary. To add the neighborhood meeting written summary to the administrative record of certain development applications, to provide the certain participants in pre-application neighborhood meetings shall be deemed persons of record. Next slide. The zoning ordinance requires pre-application neighborhood meetings for the filing of applications and therefore LDR-111 apply to all properties seeking approval of zoning map amendments, planned development approvals, Chesapeake Bay critical area overlay applications, special exemptions, detailed site plans, major departures for which the applicant chooses to hold a pre-application neighborhood meeting. Next slide. As mentioned before, the proposed bill will add additional procedures requirements to a meeting that is strictly informal by including questions and comments from the community members and by making any attendee as person on record. But more importantly, it raises concerns about hearsay evidence. Hearsay for, hearsay for proposals of Planning Board hearings is evidence-based not on a witness's personal knowledge, but on what a witness says another person said. Unfortunately with hearsay, when the person being quoted is not present, it is impossible to determine if they actually said what is being quoted. Additionally, any development proposal at the pre-application stage may differ significantly from the proposal that is eventually submitted and accepted by the Planning Department. Pre-application neighborhood meetings, which are merely informal, were established under current zoning ordinance to increase awareness to the community of a pending development proposal, encourage dialogue between applicants and the community, and encourage changes to a development application early in the process before it's accepted pursuant to the standard review procedures listed in Section 27, 3400. Hearsay evidence lacks sufficient reliability due to its subjective interpretation. It can undermine the fairness and accuracy of the administrative record and potentially lead to an unfair decision. Lastly, staff recommends that consideration should be given to allow attendees the option to choose whether they want to be designated as a person of record since their personal information would become part of the public record. In addition to the policy concerns presented in the previous slide, this bill will also have some operational and budgetary impacts that the Planning Department has to study in more detail. Some of the main concerns identified include increased staffing and data management needs, workflow programming required for DART systems. The proposed bill would only apply to applications under Subtitle 27 and will have no effect on subdivision applications which would also require pre-application neighborhood meetings. Next slide. Staff recommend keeping the language that clarifies preapplication meetings are for informational purposes only. Additionally, the requirement to include a written summary and comments from attendees as part of the record be removed. Next slide. The Planning Department takes no position on LDR-111, 2025, but transmits the comments here into the county council. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
And I see no one in opposition, similar to what I said regarding, in regards to I am a strong proponent for citizen engagement, but this bill imposes requirements on individuals without their consent or knowledge, and I cannot support that. Becoming a person of record is not simply a means of obtaining more information about a development application, it also imposes limitations. For example, once someone becomes a person of record to a development application, they are no longer allowed to communicate off the record with government officials about the application. I have concerns about taking rights like that away from citizens without their consent. Similarly, as the chairman of this board, the case record is extremely important. Within the staff report, I think the staff raises very valid concerns about adding documents to the record that merely consist of a developer's opinion about what a citizen says at a preapplication neighborhood meeting, especially when the application ultimately submitted by the applicant may differ significantly from what was discussed at the neighborhood meeting. I am in opposition of this draft bill. However, again, I am in support of working with the county council to ensure that all reach a great solution to ensure that the process is comparable to other preapplication processes in the region. Commissioners, is there a motion on this bill?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings, adopt staff findings and oppose LDR-111-2025 and ask that we transmit our opposition to include the amendments drafted by staff.
Second?
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to the next item on the agenda, item 7, Office of the Planning Director Legislative Drafting Request LDR-112-2025. Mr. Smith?
For the record, again, I am Saquon Smith with the Planning Director's Office. Item number 7 on the agenda is Legislative Drafting Request LDR-112, 2025. Next slide. LDR-112, 2025 will require the Planning Department to provide online posting of notifications of preapplication neighborhood meetings and ensuring that online postings comply with web accessibility guidelines. Next slide. LDR-112, 2025 will require the Planning Department to publish notices of any upcoming preapplication neighborhood meeting on its website in a searchable online listing. It will also require applicants to ensure that electronic notices comply with ADA web accessibility standards. Next slide. For context, preapplication neighborhood meetings are opportunities for informal communication about a proposed development project before the applicant submits one of the applications requiring a public hearing. Applicants are responsible for mailing and posting notifications of meetings, and the department receives two copies of the mail notice. An electronic version of the mail notice must be submitted to the department at least 30 days before the department accepts the application that was the subject of the meeting. The electronic version of the mail notice is only provided to the department 30 days prior to the acceptance of the application, not prior to the neighborhood meeting under Section 27-3402(c)(2)(3). It serves as an additional evidence that proper notice was provided of the meeting. As such, LDR-112, 2025 will not provide any additional means of notification to supplement posted notice unless applicants are required to provide the department a copy of the notice at the same time they mail notice. Next slide. This slide here shows the information required on a preapplication neighborhood meeting notices. Next slide. Regarding operational impacts and from a programming perspective, the proposed electronic mailing database would function as an online tool that organizes the information from each listing into searchable fields, enabling users to identify upcoming meetings in their area. The proposed legislation would require program support for the integration into the forthcoming Development Application Review Tracking System, also known as DARTs, including workflow processes, reporting functions, and plebiscite display of records. To ensure consistency in terminology, the code currently refers to different posting types. There are typical physical postings on-site, and then there are online postings. Lastly, the proposed bill will only apply to applications under Subtitle 27 and will have no effect on subdivision applications which are also require preapplication neighborhood meetings. Next slide. And next slide as well. The Planning Department takes no position on LDR-112, 2025, but transmits the comments here into the county council. This concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no one in opposition, in regards to this third legislative amendment, the preapplication neighborhood meeting is an important addition to the new zoning ordinance. However, under this legislation, it imposes a requirement on the Planning Department to maintain a searchable database for a meeting while imposing a substantial unfunded cost on the commission. This preapplication process is intended to be held between a developer and the citizens will provide little benefit to the public. Under the current code, the neighborhood meetings are held on the evenings or weekends in proximity to the location of the proposed development, and notices mailed to everyone with a stake in the project, including nearby landowners, community associations, and municipalities. Notice of the meetings is also posted on the development site for 30 days. I believe adding a searchable electronic database to the commission's website would do little to provide greater awareness of these meetings, but will impose substantial costs on the commission in terms of staff time and expenses. As such, I do not believe it is a physical responsible approach, and I am in opposition of this draft bill. However, I am in support of working with the county council to ensure that we reach a great solution and to ensure that the process is comparable to other preapplication processes in the region. Commissioners, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff's report and oppose LDR-112-2025 and that we transmit the amendments as provided or recommended by staff to the county council.
Second?
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item 8, Office of the Planning Director Legislative Drafting Request LDR-113-2025. Mr. Smith?
For the record, again, I am Saquon Smith with the Planning Director's Office. Item 8 on the agenda, Legislative Drafting Request LDR-113, 2025, regarding county use and occupancy permits for application documentation. Next slide. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to require the Department of Permitting, Inspectors, and Enforcement, at the time a county use and occupancy permit application is made, to provide a certain municipality with certain documents, and generally regarding use and occupancy permits in Prince George's County. Next slide. LDR-113, 2025 proposes DPI to provide a municipality with application and supporting documents when a county use and occupancy permit is applied for. The proposed legislation amendment would impact all properties in Prince George's County, requesting approval of a use and occupancy permit application. Next slide. The proposed legislation was reviewed and assessed by our planning staff, and the feedback concluded, LDR-113, 2025 is an amendment to the zoning ordinance administration by amending the procedures for application submittals and use and occupancy permits. The bill mandates DPI to provide the local municipality with a copy of the use and occupancy permit application. permit application and supporting documents upon submission, unless a separate permit is needed, in which case the applicant must apply for it. And lastly, upon receiving LDR 113 2025, the Planning Department decided to refer to the proposed amendment to DEPI for review and comment, as it does not fall under the purview of the department. Next slide. From this analysis, the Planning Department has no amendments at this time and recommends possible conversations with the Prince George County Department of Permitting, Inspection and Enforcements to confirm their position on the bill. Next slide. The Department takes no position on LDR 113 2025 but transmit the comments here into the County Council. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I am in agreement with no position on this particular item. Are there any questions from the Planning Board?
I have one question. Having sat on this board for several years, one thing that I, this, this proposed legislation does not apply to subdivisions, and I know that, and that's usually where the transportation issue is addressed, and I know based on prior experience, the biggest complaint that we have from residents is that they were unaware of, of the sub, of the subdivision and when they had to object to any transportation issues. So I think we should consider, since we're taking no position on it, for the council to consider to include subdivisions, so that the residents can complain about the transportation issues if there are any that exist.
Counsel.
Uh, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, James Hunt, Deputy Planning Director, the Director's Office. This, this actual piece of legislation is relevant to the use and occupancy permits. So typically what happens is that they're going to route those applications over to the Planning Department for review, and that's it. The, the code, the county code requires the, and provides that authority under the building official, which is actually the Department of Permitting, Inspections and Enforcement. And we're just a referral agency on those permits as they come through. We refer that, you know, we review it as it relates to the requirements of the zoning ordinance and provide that, those review comments back to the Department of Permitting, Inspections and Enforcement. They are not discussing primarily on these applications, the subdivision process, that has typically already happened at this point in time for these applications.
That withdraw my comments. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Commissioner Geraldo, I was gonna say that, but he just said it more eloquently. Thank you. Is there a motion from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff's report and take no position on LDR-113-2025.
Second?
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item number nine, Preliminary Plan on Subdivision, PPS-2023-027, Largo Park Lot 6. Ms. Monoa.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. For the record, I am Salmin Monoa with the subdivision section. Item number nine on the agenda is the preliminary plan of subdivision for Largo Park Lot 6, case number PPS-2023-027, which proposes one lot for residential development of three hundred ninety-eight multifamily dwelling units. This application is further subject to an approved certificate of adequacy under case Before I begin, as a matter of housekeeping, one additional item of material was submitted prior to the noon deadline on September 2nd, 2025, which is entered into the record as applicant's exhibit one. This exhibit contains resumes of the design and development team for the project. In conclusion, subdivision staff recommend that the Planning Board adopt the findings and approve PPS-2023-027, Largo Park Lot 6, Type 1 Tree Conservation Plan, TCP1-019-2025, and variance to 25-122B1G, subject to the conditions contained in the technical staff report. This concludes the staff's presentation.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the Planning Board?
None.
Seeing none, we will now hear from Heather.
Yes. I'll say that last name for you. It said, it said easier than it looks, so Delapolsky, but Heather is totally fine.
Thank you, Delapolsky.
Excuse me, Chair, before she begins her testimony, we need to swear her.
Yes.
And anyone else who is seeking to speak on your team, they could stand and...
I think it would most likely just be me, but if there are any questions.
All right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, thank you. Good morning, Chairman Barnes, members of the Board, Mr. Warner. It's great to see everybody in person. It's very exciting. So, again, Heather Delapolsky, I'm a Lenuson zoning attorney with Wire Gill, I'm the attorney for the applicant in this case. I just want to introduce who we have here in person. As I mentioned, I anticipate I'll be the only person speaking affirmatively for this hearing, and then we technically have two more hearings after this, but we do have a very full team, both here in person and on virtually, if there are any questions at all. So here in person, we have Gary Wrench, Sean Cohen, and Ian Cohen with the applicant. We also have Chris Rizzi and Nick Gelting with Bowler Engineering. And then we have virtually online, we have our architects, Niles Bolton, our landscape architects, Land Design, and then our traffic consultants, Len Hart Traffic Consulting. As I mentioned, we do have a good number of people here, but I'll be speaking, I think, pretty briefly, affirmatively, and then happy to answer any questions you have. So this development, as evidenced by the PPS and the DET case numbers of 2023, has been in the planning and underway for some time. It has been shaped by input from the community, and we can certainly get into this if there are questions, but originally, in addition to the proposed apartments, there were town homes proposed, sort of on the eastern side of the property, and that was actually very strongly opposed by the community, and so we removed those and incorporated some more open space and amenities instead. The applicant before you is the owner of the property. They're an entity of Knollwood Development Corporation, who are the developers and owners of Largo Park as a whole, so they have been a very longstanding member, member of this Largo community, and they are very excited to help advance this vision for the property, for Largo Park, and for the greater Largo community. So we're very happy to say that we are in full agreement with staff's report and recommendation and their proposed conditions of approval. So as such, if there are any questions, we are happy to help answer them, and we can call on any members of our team who are here today. But with that, I'll conclude our presentation.
Are there any questions for Ms. Delapolsky?
Just excited to see what's coming.
We are as well, thank you.
Thank you. I think there are two members from the community that have signed up to speak. Chris Reiner.
Charles Renninger.
You too. Come on up.
You know better.
Morning, Commissioner Barnes and fellow Commissioners. First, let me say that I want to congratulate Commissioner Bailey and Commissioner Washington on their long service to the community and to this planning board. I know I appeared before you many, many, many times, and I was always treated with respect, and I thank you for that.
Ms. Reiner, before you continue, we just need to swear you in.
I raised my hand when she was sworn in, but I'll do it again.
Oh, yeah, sorry. And you have a second speaker? Where's the second speaker? Someone else?
Angela Edwards.
Okay.
You're not speaking?
Need me to do it again?
Oh, let's do it again. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. And for the record, Charles Renninger, President of Largo Civic Association, I reside at 1220 Pickering Circle in Largo. We, as the applicant's attorney indicated, we have met with them on a number of occasions concerning this particular property. They did make some changes to their original preliminary plan of subdivision, specifically eliminating some townhouses the community very strongly opposed, and we are not opposed to this latest plan of subdivision. Thank you.
Mr. Renninger.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renninger.
I try, Mr. Barnes.
Ms. Delapolsky, any closing remarks?
None, thank you very much, Chairman Barnes.
Seeing there are, there are no other questions, Commissioner, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan, PPS-2023-2, excuse me, -027, TCP1-019-2025, and variance to section 25-122B1G, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report.
Second?
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item 10, Detail Site Plan, DET-2023-013, Largo Park Lot 6, and item 11, Departure from Design Standards, MJD-2024-004, Largo Park Lot 6. Ms. Hunt, I mean, Mr. Hunt.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. Welcome back, and for the record, my name's Emery Huang with Urban Design Section. Item number 10 is Detail Site Plan, DET-2023-013 for Largo Park Lot 6. This detailed site plan is for the development of three hundred ninety-eight multifamily dwelling units in one building with associated infrastructure and then amenities. As part of the application, the applicant filed a major departure application, MJD-2024-004, which is the item 11 on the agenda, deviating from the standards in section 27-4204B1B and section 27-4204B1F3AA of the Prince George County zoning ordinance, as well as an alternative compliance application, ACL-2024-005, from the requirement of the section 4.6, buffering development to front streets of the 2018 Prince George County Landscape Manual. In addition, the applicant requests a variance to section 27-2404F3 of the zoning ordinance for the minimum build to line for the proposed building. As a matter of housekeeping, the applicant submitted two exhibits prior to the Tuesday noon deadline. Exhibit one is a list of the applicant's expert's representatives. Exhibit two outlines the applicant's proposed revised conditions, which staff has reviewed and agreed upon. In conclusion, the urban design staff recommended the Planning Board adopt the finding of this report and approve Detail Site Plan, DET-2023-013, major departure, MJD-2024-004, alternative compliance, ACL-2024-005, type 2 tree conservation plan, TCP2-136-03-04, and a variance to section 27-4204F3 for Largo Park Lot 6, subject to the recommended condition of approval within the technical staff report, and the revisions proposed by the applicant and agreed upon by the staff in the applicant's exhibit two. This concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Any questions from the Planning Board? Ms. Delapolsky, we have to swear you in once again.
Thank you, Chair. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, thank you very much.
Do we have any other speakers in the public? A dead hand didn't come up. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warner. Good morning, again, Chairman Barnes and members of the Board. Heather Delapolsky, Lenuson zoning attorney for the applicant. We still have the same members of our team here in person and on virtually to answer any questions you have. Again, similar to the preliminary plan of subdivision, we are in full agreement with staff's report and recommendation and the revised conditions of approval. And I did want to say that, you know, these are fairly complex applications for, you know, three hundred ninety-eight multifamily units, which is significant, as you heard from staff and the prior staff. There are a lot of associated applications with it. It's, it's pretty complex, and we are really very pleased that we were able to get to this point with just some very minor revisions on some very detailed conditions relating to signage, which was the exhibit we submitted, and Emery noted. So I think that's just a testament to sort of everyone that on such an enormously complex case, we got to just such a great point, and we're just sort of, you know, nibbling at the, at the edges when it came down to the time of the hearing. So we're very pleased to say we are in full agreement with everything. I know we do have one speaker, so I'll just reserve any other time that I would have to respond to his comments, and also, again, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Delapolsky?
Just a quick question. First, I want to thank the developer for putting in electric vehicle chargers. Second, for putting in a dog park. And the only question, and third, I do have a question with regards to the dog park. Given the layout, will there be shade for the dogs in the dog park?
I, I believe yes. Do we have a landscape plan on, that we can advance the screen to? And I might ask if there are more technical questions. Yeah, so you can see that there are, and it's probably too, a resolution that we can necessarily read from here, but there are trees proposed on the landscape plan and in the dog park area. If you'd like more detail on the amount of shade to be provided, Land Design is on and can answer that, but...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No further questions here.
Thank you. I think we have my good friend Charles here to speak on behalf of the committee, committee, community.
Good morning again, and for the record, Charles Renninger, President of Largo Civic Association. I will state for the record again that we've met with the applicant on this particular specific design plan. They did make a number of changes to the design of the buildings at the request of the community. There was still an outstanding issue of the dog park. There are people in the community that vehemently oppose the dog park, and there are people in the community that support the dog park. So I will not take a position publicly with respect to the dog park, other than tell you personally, I don't like it, and I'm a dog lover. I think this is a prominent location in the community, and particularly with the location of the dog park at a prominent location with respect to this building, I would prefer, and Heather knows this, and the applicant knows this, that the dog park not be there. But being as, as it is, we are not taking an official position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renninger. Saying that there are no other questions, Commissioners, are there a motion on item 10 and 11?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DET-20, did you have to close?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was, I was just getting ready to say thank you. Maybe a little presumptuous of me.
I went out of order. You're right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DET-2023-013, MGD-2024-004, ACL-2024-005, TCP2-136-03-04, and variance to section 27-4204F3, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report and is further amended by applicant exhibit number two.
Great job, Ms. Washington.
Thank you.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It was great seeing everybody today.
Thank you.
This concludes all items for today's agenda. I want to thank the staff for a great job. The meeting is now adjourned.
Great job, Mr. Chair.
Great job, Mr. Chair.
Great job, Mr. Chair.